I'd like to call to order the June 11th, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website for at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 104-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports, discipline, and superintendent's evaluation and contract. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 104-13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess to executive session?
No move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public session? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We will get to the awards as quickly as we can. Right now, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Linda, we don't have any communications on the agenda. Has anything come in since the agenda was released?
Nothing came in via email or post. I did want to announce that this is the time to, if anyone is interested in becoming a board member, this is the time to file the nominating petitions. The Department of Education or New Jersey School Boards is revising the petition, though. I understand it will be out this week. The deadline for filing nominative petitions with the county clerk's office is July 30th. If anyone would like a petition, they can contact the business office. The existing board members who will be hopefully running again will be emailed a petition once it's available.
Okay, thank you, Linda. So first, on the agenda tonight, we have the correction to the minutes. Can I get a motion to move those corrections?
No move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of those corrections? Everything is the same, I think, Linda, yeah, from the last agenda?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. If there's no discussion, Linda, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich? He's not here.
He stepped out. He will be back.
Okay, so that brings us to Julia's last student representative report.
It is a big one. It's exciting. Okay, so we start off, as usual, with Irving. So Irving's whole school picnic was a giant success, and they are very thankful to Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Oh for allowing them to use the grounds of the middle school and high schools, so they were out on the turf and on the baseball field. There was a wonderful community turnout, and they're so thankful to Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Klaslow, and Ms. Marr for allowing students to make the day so successful, and also grateful to the Highland Park Police for escorting them safely. And I can speak for the students from NHS and other clubs in the high school who helped out. It was really awesome to see, well, our old teachers, because I got to see my second-grade teacher out there, but also, like, the kids were having such a great time, and it was really wonderful. As the year comes to a close, all grades will be having their musicals and end-of-the-year celebrations, and they are excited to celebrate with their families and with the children who have been working very hard. The student raffle organized by Ms. Alsager and Ms. Dubrule was a lucrative success for the PTO, and the students are so excited to place their tickets to make slime, have pizza, and petty runs with Dr. Taylor, be principal for a day with Ms. McNally, just to name a few of the items. And the winners will be enjoying their time with the staff in the next week. And finally, Irving wants to wish the entire board, staff, and students an exciting summer and thank them for being so supportive of all the programming at Irving throughout the year. From Bartle, Mr. Benjamin tells us that this year was amazing and special, not just because it was the 50th anniversary of Bartle, but also because of the level of commitment and passion the teachers displayed in ensuring students that they received the best education ever. So they engaged in over fifty activities, initiatives, and events this year, and they look forward to engaging in even more next year. So led by Brooke Baldazzoni and several teachers, Bartle sent a video message of appreciation from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society for being one of the top schools in New Jersey this year to raise funds for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Led by Bartle parent Mary Trin and the Bartle PTO and teacher volunteers, the Bartle Boardwalk was another huge success with a near-record turnout. This past weekend at the College of New Jersey, Mr. Benjamin spent three days accompanying his athletes as he completed his sixth year as an Area V Track and Field Coach for the Special Olympics of New Jersey, and like Bartle, the Special Olympics turns 50 years old this year. PE teachers, Mr. Royg and Mr. Stark, along with the help of great teachers and parent volunteers, pulled off another fabulous field day. And leading one of the largest and most talented group of student musicians, Mr. Presti, Ms. Radke, and Ms. Martinetti, and the many parents and family members in attendance, saw students perform magnificently at Bartle's 2018 Spring Concert. A great deal of cultural music was included throughout each of the performances. And finally, art teacher Ms. Inglesias showcased another talented group of artists at this year's Bartle Art Show/Exhibit. All students' cultures and traditions were represented in the many displays. From the middle school, on May 31st, they hosted Diversity Day. It was such a great success this year. It was kicked off by guest speakers that ranged from the Sudanese Lost Boys to Holocaust survivors, who shared their stories of survival and determination with the students and staff. Then students went off to their workshops, which included hip-hop dance, Muslim experience, DJ beats, Mexico Beyond Mariachi, meditation, yoga, and also a cultural exchange workshop run by yours truly and Sophia McDermott Hughes. The feedback from students and staff was really phenomenal, and the students were excellent participants. The middle school held its last pep rally of the year on May 25th. It was a great time had by all, and they cheered their soccer, wrestling, baseball, and track teams. The grade competed in physical challenges such as musical hula-hooping and back-to-back ball racing with the eighth-grade team, coming in as the winning grade. Students in Action hosted a thank-you breakfast for the Highland Park First Responders, members of the police, fire department, EMS, and crossing guards, and they were served a delicious breakfast by the student group. The student body showed up and showed out at the Middle School Talent Show in May. Acts included singing, dancing, instrumental, and even stand-up comedy, and middle school students even got on the stage and danced the cha-cha slide with teachers and the principals. HPMS hosted its annual Middle School Jazz Poetry Coffee House. Students showcased their artwork, read selections from their poetry unit, and listened to the smooth rhythms of jazz played by the middle school's very own jazz ensemble. Parents and community members were thrilled by the aesthetics and syncopation, and the night was ever so groovy. Last week, the sixth-grade class held the Be the Change Night. During this event, students displayed their action research projects that ranged from refugee rights to mental illness awareness. Students selected a cause, researched it, and found ways to make an impact. So sixth-grade leaders demonstrated citizenship and activism and made the entire Highland Park community very proud. Just today, the fifth-grade Bartle students came to the middle school for their orientation. The Bartle teachers escorted the students to the middle school where groups of sixth-grade guides toured them around the school. The fifth graders met the sixth-grade teachers, guidance, the administration, and had a Q&amp;A session with the veteran sixth-grade students. We welcomed them all to the middle school family. The eighth-grade class participated in Eighth Grade Model United Nations Today, or EGMUN. The students emulated delegates from their poise and preparation and even down to their attire. They represented countries and demonstrated their understanding through some dynamic presentations of the resolutions at the end of the day. This Friday, the New Jersey CARES Corp. will bring a hundred volunteers from the L'Oréal Corporation to hold various workshops for seventh-grade students and provide volunteers for school beautification. They will be painting the locker rooms and bathrooms, painting murals, planting flowers, setting up an alfresco lunch area with its own rock garden and raised garden beds, and the middle school was selected from over a hundred schools in New Jersey for this service project. The middle school eighth-grade trip to Dorney Park is tomorrow, the eighth-grade dance is on Wednesday, and the moving-up ceremony is on the 20th, and so a fantastic year has come and gone at the middle school. And finally, we wrap up with the high school. So today, high school students from the Model UN and Congress Club helped to facilitate the eighth-grade Model UN. Students in grades 10 through 12 directed committees, ran conference logistics, and organized crisis. The public art class, led by the wonderful Ms. Grunstein, is finishing up their semester-long art project. The class created ceramic totem poles that represented the four pillars of the OWLS acronym: openness, wisdom, leadership, and spirit, and students are completing kiln firings of all the pieces, glazing them, and we will install the poles as our final project. They should be kind of right outside the gym, and they are truly awesome, so I'm really excited to see how they turn out. On June 22nd, the High School Environmental Club will host their annual Eco-Fest, a day devoted to learning about the environment and taking action, and students will have the opportunity to explore the theme, which is student action, throughout various workshops all day. On June 5th, the high school honored deserving seniors at the annual Senior Awards Night. It was a special opportunity for this group and their families to celebrate their impressive accomplishments and dedication. On June 7th, the class of 2018 hosted their prom. The prom had excellent attendance. It was a wonderful night for seniors to enjoy their classmates before graduation. And seniors will be doing the senior walk on June 20th to visit teachers and students at Irving, Bartle, and the middle school, ending in the high school cafeteria. This event has become a great tradition in celebrating our seniors and giving all their former teachers, rather, a chance to clap for them, congratulate them, and wish them success for the future. High school graduation is on the 20th on the high school lawn. Congratulations to all the graduating seniors. And project graduation will start at 10:30 PM on that day and extend till 4:00 AM on the 21st. Seniors will bond together with games, roller skating, swimming, and all kinds of activities, and a huge thank you to the parents of our class and the project graduation committee for making the event possible. And finally, diplomas will be awarded on the 25th, the last day of school, by Mr. Lassiter in the auditorium. And with that, that concludes my report.
Well done, as always, Julia. Thank you very much. I'm not even going to say anything. I know Dr. Taylor has something for you later. Are we doing that?
Yes.
We're doing that later? We're doing that later?
Yes.
Okay.
In about twenty minutes.
Okay. All right, so we will move on then to Dr. Taylor's report.
My favorite board meeting is tonight. Not that all other board meetings are not my favorites too, but tonight is when we bring the, almost the entire high school out and faculty and staff. We have a chance to recognize all the folks who did some really special things, worked really hard, persevered all year. So here will be the order of events. First thing we're going to do is recognize school personnel who are honored as being the best of the best for the year. I'll be asking the principals to say a few words about those folks. We'll also be recognizing some staff who will be leaving us through retirement. And then I am going to ask Mr. Lassiter to stay. He's going to introduce somebody very special, who was on our agenda later tonight. We'll then honor the last remaining board representative. We honored Olivia Estes last week. She's at a college orientation at George Washington University as we speak. Mm-hmm, yay for Olivia. And then we'll recognize the students who are here and their parents. We will be taking lots of photos, and I'll be putting a spread on the website, so my trusty photographer, Julia, except for the time when you'll actually be in the picture, will actually use a camera. I brought a camera tonight. Thank you. So the first thing I'd like to do is have Ms. McNally, our interim principal at Irving, come to the podium. I'll be joining you.
Well, good evening, everybody. I cannot get over the turnout here tonight. We're so excited to have you, and I do have a number of people I'm going to recognize, and I'll put a caveat on there. There's no particular order, it's however my papers fell. So I will be starting tonight with Irving's Educational Service Professional of the Year for 2017-2018. That was Mr. Stephen Connors. So a couple of things that come to mind with Mr. Connors. First, he is an absolute asset to the staff and the students that he works with every day at Irving. His dedication to working with students does not go unnoticed, and he is a sweet, kind, gentle soul. Staff refer to him as the kid whisperer, though he may not know that for a good reason. He is always consistent with students, and his expectations never waver. Students in his care have made tremendous academic growth. One teacher mentioned that during downtime, he uses the names of wrestlers to supplement their learning with phonemic sense. Mr. Connors, this is a well-deserved award, and we are so thankful to work with you each day. winner is a very familiar face here in Highland Park. Though Mrs. Fittipaldi has since left the classroom, her dedication has not. She tirelessly works as our supervisor of humanities and has really made her mark here in Highland Park. Teachers and staff look to her for her expertise on reading and writing, and Rebecca never says no to putting more on top of her already full plate. Working with Rebecca, she is extremely organized and detail-oriented. I learned that she would never leave her classroom for the night until she had a clear If she asked you to do something and you were too slow, well, Rebecca was right there to do it herself. Any activity that required craftiness, yeah, that was not for Rebecca. She was not the one to make pretty crafts. Even though she has moved on, moved on up in her career, her inability to peel an orange or taking the smell of fish for lunch has not changed. Her witty and contagious personality is what makes Rebecca shine in and out of the classroom. Congratulations, Mrs. Fittipaldi. Come on up. I see you back there with your adorable grandsons. Aw. Mrs. Blevins will be leaving us through retirement after nineteen years of service here in Highland Park. Mrs. Blevins is one of the most easygoing individuals that I have ever had the pleasure of working with. Over her years here, frequent words from her include "of course," "not a problem," "my pleasure," because this speaks to her morals and who she is as an educator. It is always about the kids, how she can help them best, how she can be of support to the teachers. Her colleagues say Jeannie can always be counted on. Nothing is ever about her, and she never complains. She is a fixture on the afternoon car line, greeting all families, wishing the children a great day, and doing this with a smile in the cold, rain, and extreme heat. What you may not know is how much she loves Quick Check. This run of hers is a daily task, asking all those on her path out the door if they would like anything. Jeannie, you give so much of yourself to others always. Please know how many lives you have had the pleasure of touching just in your presence. Congratulations, come on up. retired. We were blessed with her for thirty-two years, and though I personally did not know Ms. Verity since, you know, working at Irving, I wanted to have Ms. Zara here to speak to how truly wonderful she is over the years that they spent together in the classroom. Mrs. Verity spent a wonderful thirty-two years doing exactly what she loved: being around children and building relationships with her fellow colleagues.
Well, I am very happy to speak on Betty's behalf tonight. I've known Betty for many years. She's been a dear friend, neighbor, and coworker. I would say Betty is best known for her love of family, friends, which are very close second to her family, her love of fine food, and weekly trips to Costco. If asked to describe Betty in one sentence, I would probably say, given any endeavor she pursues, Betty gives with her whole heart and soul. Throughout the year, she has always given so much and asked so little in return. Many may not know that Betty also has a background in nursing. For many years, she volunteered with the Highland Park First Aid Squad, requiring an enormous amount of time and training. At Irving School, Betty was best known as our social director. In those days, never was a birthday overlooked. Celebrations always included pastries, donuts, desserts, and of course, cake. She made all the arrangements, never shy about sending her husband Danny on some wild goose chase to pick up this or that. We miss those days, Betty. Betty taught us kindness and perseverance, too. She loved working at Irving School, spending time with little children and good friends. In later years, even when in pain, Betty persevered, always with a smile and a willingness to help out wherever needed. She's even been volunteering in the Irving School library in recent weeks. Betty, you will always have a home at Irving School, so please do not be a stranger. We miss you.
I'm going to raise the microphone because the next gentleman to come is taller than I am. Mr. Benjamin, the principal of Bartle, come on up to the podium.
Well, well, you know, I had to take off my tie because I thought today, you know, I want to avoid getting choked up because these two individuals that we're going to talk about tonight can do that. So I'm going to probably go in a different order than Megan did. I'm going to start off with our Teacher of the Year. Our Teacher, the Bartle Teacher of the Year, is Ms. Jody McLean, and you know, I'm going to say this first. We're about to have some church up in here, because when many of you actually hear what I'm going to say about these two individuals, there are going to be a lot of amens, so. All right? So Connie Stevens says, "Nothing you wear is more important than your smile." Somehow, I need to check Ms. McLean's backpack and see what type of battery is running her smile switch, because ever since I arrived to Bartle and met Ms. McLean, she maintains a smile that says, "I believe in you, I'm happy that you're here, and look at things on the bright side." I know that if I'm in need of or could use those types of smiles on a weekly basis, I know that many, many students can use those on a daily basis. Ms. McLean is the ultimate teacher. Ms. McLean, or Jody, when there are no kids around, oftentimes can be represented as this. She has a love of kids. Ms. Jody really cares about the students and their lives, both inside and outside of school. It really pains her to see when students are struggling, not only academically, but socially and emotionally, and especially financially. So many people say they love teaching, but few people say that they love learning from kids to help them teach, and Jody is one of them. She has a passion for teaching, especially language arts. Jody's eyes light up like, Jody's eyes light up and they exhibit that sparkle when she talks about teaching, reading, and language arts. If Jody could only teach one subject, I imagine it would be reading, because in teaching kids to learn to read helps students explore themselves and the world without ever having to leave their seat. Jody is empathic. Jody's sense of balance and fairness has always put, always has her putting herself in the shoes of another. It's almost effortless for Jody to see someone else's perspective. Also, she is quite skillful and stays in a mode of inquiry when trying to get others to see things from a different perspective. She has a tremendous work ethic. Jody and every other teacher, at some point, whether it was before they decided to study to become a teacher, at the start of their teaching career, or currently realizing this now that the teaching profession is hard and the work is never really done, she knows that. Jody perseveres through the many challenges and changes and continues to love the profession even when it doesn't always love her or many of us back. Jody is collaborative. Her colleagues, as testament to those that are in attendance, will tell you that Jody is an absolute delight to work alongside. I can attest to how much of an impact Jody has had on Bartle, being the collaborative learning environment it is today. Jody represents all there is to need in someone willing to adjust, adapt, share, lead, and inspire through her tireless collaboration and positive contributions to her team and our Bartle School. And lastly, Jody is always willing to reflect. Jody is a reflective practitioner, which I think we're working to be more of that each and every day, just in general, as teaching practitioners. And she can easily explain where she may have gotten something wrong, or she may have had a different interpretation or execution of something, and she always identifies a strategy that she'll employ to get it right the next time. Ms. McLean, I am truly honored to serve alongside you while we ensure the students of Bartle receive the best possible elementary experience any student could ever want or imagine. And in closing, Anthony D'Angelo says, "Smile, it is the key that fits the lock of everybody's heart." Ms. McLean, come on down. Okay, so I made a mistake, so I'm going to just preface it by saying, no, this isn't a, no, it's not a mistake. What am I saying? This isn't a mistake. I'm going to be introducing the next person is our, someone very, very special to not only me in this room, but to probably every person in this room. She knows you, she has impacted your life on so many levels. She has been nominated and received the MCA, or Middlesex County Educational Association Award, the same exact award here, but actually on the county level as well. So our educational service professional, service professional, is Jewel Soroka. And I, so Jewel, I actually unfortunately wrote a dissertation, so bear in mind, one second, sorry. Individual commitment to a group effort, that is what makes a teamwork, a company work, a society work, and a civilization work. That's by Vince Lombardi. I've known Jewel for the past four years as her principal. Prior to formally meeting Jewel when I arrived in 2014 as Bartle's new principal, I witnessed her interaction with several students and staff on the playground. Jewel had a presence about her which communicated her confidence, care, and sense of direction for student behavior and expectations throughout lunch and recess. for student behavior and expectations throughout lunch and recess. I was immediately impressed with Jewel and remain impressed with her commitment to the student, staff, and systems that make Bardot great. In addition to her commitment, Jewel's insight, instinct, and ability to respond during crises is what makes her exceptional, highly valued, and very much appreciated. Jewel has and continues to serve our students in ways that go well beyond her power professional duties, of which she engages with distinction. Number one, Jewel, if you've ever come to Bardot, you'll... and well, now you know if you don't, Jewel is our actual Danny the Dolphin mascot. So two years ago, I contemplated and discussed the idea of having a Bardot mascot with the school leadership team, and with the support of the students and the staff, we were able to purchase and name our new mascot, Danny the Dolphin. From the outset, Jewel was excited, enthusiastic, and volunteer to wear the mascot at community-wide events. Since then, Jewel, aka Danny, has become an integral part of Bardot, of the Bardot identity and school spirit. Jewel has been a constant and reliable resource in serving as Danny the Dolphin during the first day back-to-school event, pep rallies, nightly events, monthly assemblies, you name it, arts in the park, you can see Danny Dolphin there. Every once in a while, Jewel will also accompany me to several classrooms to surprise students and/or present an award, acknowledge, or just say hello to the class. The school's positive energy is extremely high and infectious because when Danny the Dolphin is around, everybody smiles. Jewel, wow, this is one that's pretty, pretty easily. Jewel is assigned some of the most challenging students that any classroom could ever have. Jewel has always been assigned these behaviorally challenging students because of her ability to establish an initial rapport of trust while maintaining a firm, fair, and consistent and loving manner which each student entrusted in her care. Jewel takes the time to get to know each and every one of her students on a very personal and a professional level. She knows what foods her students like to eat, the shows or video games they like to watch or play, and environmental factors that might trigger a negative response from them. Jewel knows just how to talk to her students so that they express their anger, fear, in a more positive and constructive manner. Jewel's a leader within. Jewel has extensive institutional and community knowledge about Bardot and Highland Park, and this is invaluable as she knows our systems, past practices, and has significant relationships with countless parents and families as she has served as the babysitter for many of them, especially when they were babies and toddlers or infants. Jewel knows our lunch and recess protocol expectations and contribute to student transactions, transitions, and safety protocol. You name it, Jewel does it. Jewel engages in after-school evening and weekend activities, whatever, whether it's parent movie night, the ice cream social, family Valentine dance, being a member of the Bardot Green Team, engaging on Saturday Reading Buddies program, engaging in childcare during back-to-school night, you name it, Jewel's there. She is the ultimate team player. There are few activities or events that you would not see Jewel at. Her presence is known and again, highly desired and requested. Jewel can lead an event or simply serve as a phenomenal wingwoman. On two separate occasions, at parent movie night and Valentine dance, Jewel did a phenomenal job spearheading the popcorn-making and distribution efforts. All attendees were satisfied. Despite popcorn and supplies running low at both events, Jewel managed to ensure that every student received popcorn before they left the school that night, and they had smiles on their faces. Jewel's care and ingenuity assured this. Bardot is an exceptional learning environment because of thoughtful, caring, and committed people like Jewel Soroka. Thank you for everything you do, Jewel, and remember, perseverance is the hard work you do after you get tired of doing the hard work you already did. Jewel Soroka, congratulations, welcome to the podium.
I'd now like to introduce our middle school principal, Mrs. Jennifer Ossamayay.
My friend, you raised the bar to a place that I cannot reach, but I'm gonna try. So, tonight, I am here, and thank you so much for coming out, to honor a consummate professional, a friend, and someone that I myself want to emulate. In this time of testing, high-stakes testing, and just always looking for how we measure the success of our kids based on that number, it is refreshing to know that the arts have a place in the program... of our school, in our programming. No one better to bring that artsy feel, that love of the Je ne sais quoi than you, Ms. Hawthorne. Ms. Hawthorne, and we can clap for her right now. Ms. Hawthorne brings the word aesthetics to the profession, and not just for the subject that she teaches, but in her manner and in the way she carries herself, in every way that she interacts with students, with parents, with colleagues, with administration. She is someone that I love working with and someone that the students love to be with. Whenever you pass by the art room, it's always filled with kids, not only because she has 30-plus kids in every class, she has the largest classes, she does not complain. But during lunch, students seek her out because she is not only their teacher, she's their mentor, she's someone that they can go to, she is someone that listens to them. She knows every child in our school, she knows their backstories. She is someone that I would want my children to know because I know that I close my eyes and in that room, our kids receive the love, the support, that they need from someone that really, really cares about them. I want to say thank you to her husband and her two daughters because I know that I take her away from you, and I'm sorry that I do, but she is so, so, so engrossed in everything that we do in our school. She's on the INS team, she leads community events in the evenings, she silently does all these things because she doesn't boast, she doesn't brag. She leads the Bring Your Child to Work Day by herself, she organizes it, she creates the events, she gets all the activities together. She keeps also a high bar of integrity and professionalism that she just... she just shines. She shines, and her colleagues love her, and I love her, the students love you. And I don't have a big speech, but all I can tell you is, you are the teacher of the year, and you're the teacher of the century, and you're the teacher of my life. And we are both, also, I just have to say, these grandiose thinkers, right? And a little bit cluttered in the way that we do stuff, right? So the only thing I can say is, do not approach the back closet of the art room because Jumanji comes out, right? So come on up here and receive your award.
I would like to give a shout-out to one individual who was the Education Service Professional of the Year and is based at the middle school mostly, and that's Esther Tursky. Esther couldn't be here tonight, she's one of our occupational therapists, one of our rock star child study team members. We'll give Esther her certificate and award tomorrow. At this time, I'd like to invite the high school principal to the podium, Mr. Michael Lassner.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I do have some written words, and the first person that I wanted to talk about is our teacher of the year, but he's also a dedicated husband and father, and he couldn't be here tonight, but I can't go without saying and getting it on film, some things about Dr. Esteban, our teacher of the year. And so, I'm gonna read those out, I hope he's watching at home, and we'll send him this videotape. Dr. Esteban has worked at Highland Park High School for 15 years, having taught previously in a charter school in Jersey City. I've known, and I'll say this only once, Nacho for a long time, and that's how his colleagues really refer to him. He's one of the few faculty members, though, who rises above our faculty in the fact that he has a doctorate. This in itself defines Dr. Esteban as one of the best role models of lifelong learning for our students. At times, he has also worked as an adjunct professor as well. Dr. Esteban has worked closely with all of his students at various levels, although in most recent years, he has been assigned to teach upper-level and advanced placement Spanish. He also worked with me personally to restart the course that he started for our native speakers, Spanish for Native Speakers, and next year, there'll be a Spanish for Native Speakers, too, because he really prides himself in helping those students to do their best and read literature in Spanish. He's a strong advocate for students to make the most of their learning, to balance their extracurricular pursuits with academics appropriately, and to take advantage of all the school has to offer. He is a proponent for the disenfranchised students the most and seeks out ways for the school to empower them to meet their needs. Oftentimes, Ignacio provides translation for sensitive communications with parents and students to ensure that the schools communicates effectively in this process. He also helped to launch the Seal of Bilinguacy this year, and so our graduates actually will graduate with a actual endorsement from the state that they are bilinguine. Ignacio has visited China twice with a college board program to tour the schools in China, learning about their education systems and encouraging global communication and partnership. He also works closely with Rutgers University and the Graduate School of Education, maintaining our partnership with our sister schools in Mexico, and he trains future Spanish teachers in their craft. His students have plenty to say, more than a dozen of them nominated him, and this includes much praise and sometimes some complaints about his high standards, complaints that show he's a good teacher. If a student is complaining a little bit about the work you give them, maybe you're not giving them those high standards. Some quotes from his nominations include, "Dr. Esteban works to achieve the goals of his students. He is open, approachable, understanding, and challenging to the right degree because he works to serve those students. He's engaging and funny, and a terrific teacher. He brings in a lot of outside resources, and he is always willing to help with an essay or just to chat." He even wrote an essay himself so that he could get a smartboard in his classroom to bring those extra resources to his students. Another student said he was going to stop taking Spanish his junior year, but Dr. Esteban mentored him, encouraged him to take AP, and now that student is a translator in a citizenship class that we offer in this school. All of his nominations had a common theme: Take Dr. Esteban classes, and you will learn to communicate in Spanish. And you will learn how to be a better student from a wonderful person. We all truly appreciate Dr. Esteban." Our educational services professional is here, and she brought her family. I'm trying to see, there we go. Ms. Hayes, our guidance counselor, was nominated and selected as our educational services professional for the year. She's been working at Highland Park High School for the past four years and will be receiving tenure in the fall. She brought with her experiences from a couple other districts, including Howe, and lots of connections, to bring them to our school. Her efforts since she has arrived were to be sure our guidance office offered all students better opportunities to prepare for colleges and careers after graduation. She championed the use of Naviance and helped us to get it, right down to ordering all the different components to it and always looking to try to make sure we got the best for our bucks, and to better assist our students now with their decision-making and the application process to get into colleges. She helped to streamline Power School when we had it, so that could serve our students and our guidance office better, and now she's doing the same with Genesis. Melissa has served as our anti-bullying specialist since coming to HP and has done a great job investigating reports and assisting our students who feel victimized to seek restitution and resolution of these concerns. In fact, her reports as an anti-bullying specialist became a model for all the other anti-bullying specialists in our district. She has led our students and guided them during the Week of Respect and our early-year focuses on violence reduction and anti-bullying. With a variety of campaigns, podcasts, and activities, to be sure, the students feel safe at Highland Park High School. She created the elective fair as well so that eighth-grade students and our underclassmen could learn directly from seniors about all our high school has to offer. Additionally, whenever we have a wellness day planned, Melissa is quick to volunteer to run a personal fitness workshop as she is a personal trainer after school. I attended one of those workshops a couple years ago, and boy, was I sore when I was done. Melissa is an advocate for our students and has assisted and counseled a broad range of about 200 students in her caseload through a variety of issues and concerns. I can think of quite a number of students who've been helped through some very difficult and challenging situations just by speaking with Ms. Hayes. And many of those are so confidential and so serious that they bring a tear to my eye just thinking about them. Melissa is quick to alert me or Ms. Brady when there are administrative issues, and she collaborates with a teen center in our building to get students additional help when needed. Ms. Hayes is open, caring, and helpful to our students, but is also fair and holds her expectations for their success high as well. If students do not do what they need to succeed, Melissa will assist with plans to get them back on track by ensuring that they take ownership and accountability for their mistakes. I don't remember very much from my guidance counselor in high school. To be honest with you, I can't even picture his face because I probably saw him once. That's not Ms. Hayes. Our students see Ms. Hayes, they trust Ms. Hayes, they seek her out, they confide in her, and she helps get them on the right path. Thank you so much. Now, I have the good fortune now of introducing someone to everyone for the first time. She's here with her entire family, and we are welcoming her to our family here at Highland Park. We are so fortunate to finally have an assistant principal dedicated to the high school, and I'll miss Ms. Brady, but I know it's for her benefit as well, for her not to have to run back and forth between the middle school and the high school. We are bringing onboard Ms. Keisha Golden Cooper, and she comes to us with a lot of experience in guidance and student assistance counseling, as a health and physical education teacher, not a gym teacher, as she says, and don't you dare call it just being a gym teacher. She was a track coach, and she has a wealth of experience from West Orange and Montclair, and we are so happy to have her onboard, starting in September. Please welcome with me Ms. Keisha Golden Cooper.
Good evening, good evening, Highland Park, my new family, wow. I'm truly honored and humbled beyond belief to have been able to have the opportunity to go through a rigorous process, and I understand why. Simply stated, that being able to sit here and listen to the accolades of the faculty that's already here makes me even more excited to join the family. I'm definitely enthusiastic, I'm definitely ready to go, and I look forward to meeting, if not all of you, then most of you. I'm definitely the type of person, I love to talk, the counseling background, I love to help, that's the student assistance background, and I'm ready to hit the ground running and to work. So if you have anything that I can possibly help you with, please, 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 let me know. I obviously want to thank the board for your support and your confidence in me, of course, my new buddy Scott, the superintendent, obviously the board president. It has been a pleasure having gone through the experience, and of course... And of course, my new teammate, putting a play on the coaching and track days, my new teammate, Mr. Lassiter. So again, thank you so much. I'm so excited to take on any challenge. And thank you for welcoming me to the family.
I would like to give a shout-out to somebody who's not with us tonight, who has retired, I should say, Janet Chapowicz. Janet's a neighbor and a friend to some of us here in the Highland Park community. She was a resident, now she's moved to Florida. On a full-time basis, Janet was our payroll and benefit specialist. She shepherded a new wave of the way we do things through over the last two decades. So, in absentia, unless she's watching, I thank Janet for all her hard work and all that she did to support the business office. We will have to mail her her certificate and award. Before I pass the mic back to Mr. Lassiter and some of his teachers to recognize students, and by the way, when we're done recognizing students, we'll take about a five-minute breather. We've got cookies, water. We can mill about a little bit before we pick up the board business again. And then, you are all welcome to leave, unless you'd like to stay for the rest of the board meeting. Entirely up to you. But what I would like to do is recognize Julia Lebel McLean. Julia is going to be leaving us to go off to Georgetown University. Not an easy institution to be admitted to. I've known Julia since playgroup, being that I have two kids of my own who are here, one of whom is a friend of Julia's, Sarah Taylor. I'll be graduating with Julia in a couple of weeks. So, when I found out that Julia and Olivia Estes were going to be our board reps, I was obviously excited. But I didn't realize who they really are, deep down, as adults and contributors to the board until they joined us back in September. Amazing listeners, very pensive, with lock eyes on us. I watched you, Julia, watching the board as they were speaking about different issues, whether it's about our world language program, about our efforts to work through ability groups. And you would then, when you felt appropriate, chime in. And when you would add your input, it would be done with such diplomacy, in such an articulate way, so as not to offend, but at the same point to get your point across. And I thought your points were made aggressively, again, but with diplomacy. They were never, I thought, insulting, patronizing in any way, shape, or form. And I think I'm speaking for at least some of the board members who were nodding in approval when I say that you were just one of the most fabulous student reps I've had since I've been here. It's only been three years, but really, you just brought all those great qualities to the board. I have a certificate for you that you can frame and put on your dorm wall, right next to everything else. And let's take a picture, but obviously, you can't take that picture. So, Mr. Lassiter, thank you. If you could step in. So at this time, I'm going to introduce one of Mr. Lassiter's teachers, Mr. Gold, Mr. Adam Gold, who's here to come to the podium and say a few words about some special students with whom he's worked. Mr. Lassiter, you can join me here at the podium.
Okay, so, back in March, we had an opportunity to go to Mexico City as a school district. And we were able to send a group of students as ambassadors, not only of their high school, but also of the community, of the state, and of our country to a conference called the Mexico International Model UN Conference. This is the second year we've had an opportunity to go, thanks to a grant from HPEF and a couple of other organizations. We were actually this year able to send a group of students on scholarship. Some students were able to go entirely on scholarship, which we were really proud of, based on student fundraising efforts. And, you know, this is really one of my favorite moments of my career, to be able to watch these students represent their country so well. And this was at a time where there was some political turmoil between US and Mexico. It had been after a new president was inaugurated, and of course, with that, some diplomatic challenges, especially between the two countries. And for these students to work together, mainly with Mexican students down in Mexico City, to learn from each other, visiting schools, taking classes there, and then actually working through a diplomatic conference together, it's really amazing to see their work. And I wish all of you could get a little sense of what they are able to accomplish when they're there. Last year, we were privileged to have won the first-place award. This year, the conference got bigger, much bigger. And even though it got bigger, we were again able to win a first-place delegation award. It was a really special moment, so we wanted to invite all of the members of that delegation that are here to come up as a group, and we're going to take a picture, and each of you are going to get a certificate. So congratulations to all of the members of the Mexico International Model United Nations team. As they're going to get set up, just very quickly, we had Adam Lebel McLean, Adalina Brinescu, Avery Halli-Locke, Charlie Straylo, Edon Blank, Emily Berman, Irene Westfall, Julia Lebel McLean, Julia Woodward, Katie Volpert, Lucas Sass, Mark Ramreka, Marcelo Escalante, Liv Estes, Olivia Locky, Sean Lee, Sophia Werny, Sophia McDermott Hughes, Uchechi Odukanwa, and Uriel Morales Avila. So again, a round of applause for Mr. Lassiter. Okay, we also had some individual awards based on our participation in Rutgers Model Congress. So, our club does Model UN events, as well as Model Congress events, where we debate domestic issues. This conference was held at Rutgers, and so I'll call these people up. Tara Shukla won the Best Position Paper Award. Juhi Jiang won the Outstanding Delegate Award. Charles Straylo won the Most Improved Delegate Award. Julia Woodward won the Distinguished Delegate Award. Chan Lee Hung won the Distinguished Delegate Award. Phoebe Chong won the Most Improved Delegate Award. Marcelo Escalante, you're here? Come on up. The Outstanding Delegate Award. All right, so I guess anyone else that we call up, just come up. We'll take a group photo to make it a little quicker. Katie Volpert won the Best Delegate Award. Avery Halli-Locke won the Outstanding Delegate Award. Julia Lebel McLean won the Best Delegate Award. Adam Lebel McLean won the Outstanding Delegate Award. Alana Isaacson won the Outstanding Delegate Award. Sophia McDermott Hughes won the Best Delegate Award. Liv Estes won the Best Position Paper Award. Gervin Anan won the Best Delegate Award. Dylan Tullock won the Best Position Paper Award. And Edon Blank won the Best Position Paper Award. As a group, we won more awards than we have in quite a long time. Seventeen awards, which was a wonderful win for the group.
Bringing back lots of memories. I'm so proud of that group for what they do in the state, what they do internationally. Could have never dreamed of how far they've come since that club started over 20 years ago. Next up, and just before I introduce the next person, I'm just proud of all the high school students tonight. Whether we talk about Model UN, whether we talk about DECA, which we're about to speak of, whether we talk about all the athletic awards, the Battle of the Books, which we started on the high school level, our high school has done amazing things this year. If you don't know, I wear this pin now very proudly. We are the number-one high school in the state of New Jersey, the number-17 high school in the county of Middlesex, I'm sorry. I still think of us as number-one in the state. Number-17 in the state, and number-109 in the entire country for our STEM program. It's recognized by the US News World Reports, and the first time that I can remember in my 25 years that we have gold ranking. And that's based on a lot of the accomplishments of these students and our students from last year. So, give everyone a round of applause before we go forward. And I want to introduce up Mr. Harper, Ms. Chirco, and Ms. Harper, if she could be here, but she's not feeling well. So, Mr. Harper and Ms. Chirco are DECA Program Advisors. Come on up.
I still have to stand on my toes. So, Highland Park DECA has done some extraordinary things this year. We have had our best year yet. We've had a record-high 90 members. We've created a brand-new school store, had two gold-level store-based enterprises, held a third annual color run, donated $3,000 to the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and so much more. And tonight, we'd like to recognize some of the students who have done these amazing things. Last year, three students took on the challenge of taking the old trainer's room and created a brand-new school store. They worked hard all summer to clean and turn the room into what it is today. With only $300, they created tables, a countertop, had refrigerators donated, painted walls, and completely transformed it. The school store is now a place where students can come by and grab a snack, do some classwork, or buy some new Highland Park clothing. This is also open to anyone in the town who would also like to buy clothing, in case you didn't know. Although Eli may say this is his store, all three of you have worked so hard to start, maintain, and operate this school store, and we'd like to honor you. So Eli, Maria, and Wenye, we'd like to start with you. This year, we are lucky enough to take 32 students to international competition in Atlanta, Georgia. One of the ways to compete at ICDC is by writing and presenting a 30-page manual. This year, Claire, Alexandra, and Louise decided to teach refugees financial literacy. Through this process, they create lessons, surveys, and made sure everyone understood the basics of financial literacy. This project not only made it to international competition, but placed in the top 10 internationally, and we could not be more proud of what they have accomplished this year. So Claire, Alexandra, and Louise, please come up. Not only was it exciting to see one group succeed at ICDC, but to see two succeed was absolutely incredible. Pirikant, Carolyn, and Olivia worked all year with the Glow students on the entrepreneurship promotion project, Beyond the Spectrum. These students worked closely with the Glow students to teach them basic entrepreneurship. With this project, they placed within the top 16 internationally. We know their hard work has not gone unnoticed, and we'd like to acknowledge them here as well. So Pirikant, Olivia, and Carolyn, please come up here. And last but not least, we'd like to recognize Alana Dakowitz. Alana has worked so hard all year and has received two DECA scholarships, one at the regional level and one on the state level. Alana ran the third annual color run, is the co-president of DECA, and the co-editor of the yearbook. We could not be more proud of her and wish her all the best in all of her future endeavors. So Alana, please come up here as well.
I'm sure you're aware, when you hear what they say, almost all the work that DECA does really goes back right into the program, goes right back into the students being able to go to these competitions, and goes into charities like the Make-A-Wish Foundation and all the other charities that they support during the year. So another round of applause for our DECA program. And I'm really looking forward to that school store's continued expansion next year. It was a little trainer's room, I said have at it, they had at it, and got gold certified by the DECA chapter on the national level, I think, in their first year. So, that's just amazing what they do. Next, the Battle of the Books. Ms. Puccio couldn't be here tonight, but again, as I said earlier, she started, actually, the Battle of the Books on the high school level, and it got to the point this year where we filled not only the media center with teams from other schools, but our auditorium as well when Battle of the Books on the high school level threw down, if you will, just a few months ago. And so I'm going to read off the names of all the students who participated. We may not have won an award at our own hosting, but the fact that these students read ten additional books, learned them, and were able to compete on their knowledge of those books, I think is quite a feat. So, let's give them all a round of applause, and then I'll call them up. If you're here, come on up, and we'll save our applause until you all get up here. Ava Schwartz, Joyce Moe, Polly Minden, Yasmin LaCalle, Gervin Anand, Ruth Fishman, Linnea Peterson, Sophie Woodward, Zaiyu Li, Noah Hartwick, Tara Shukla, Michelle Rothberg, Gabriela Toral, Isabella Toral, Alaya Gutha, Victoria Lee, Ken Chow, Sarah Kim, Pirikant, and Gabriela Sanchez. I'm going to get that last name right. And the next person I'm going to introduce has a lot of awards to give out as well. I am truly, truly ecstatic and excited about all the athletic awards that we've been able to garnish this year, starting from the fall season, but today, it's time to honor our winter and spring season athletes, so please welcome up Mr. Craig Gervin, our Athletic Coordinator, to give out those awards.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Before I get into the individual awards, I just want to say a note about our, we have a deep and long history of athletics here at Highland Park with a lot of successful teams, but this year's been an extraordinary year in Highland Park Athletics. We set a school record for victories in girls soccer, we set a school record for victory in boys soccer, won a state sectional title there, we won a state championships in winter track, we won a state sectional title in tennis, and we are in the hunt, one of the top two teams for what's called the Shop Right Cup, which is the best Group One sports program in the state. So, I'm very proud of all of our athletes, and I want to recognize a few of those kids tonight. We'll start with the winter. I'm not so sure if this guy is here, but I had the pleasure of working with him in wrestling all winter, and he did a tremendous job and improved a lot over the years, and that is Sean Lee. Moving into the spring, we had a successful season this year in softball. We really improved tremendously, and we're certainly looking for good things. We have a nice young team coming back, and two of the players were recognized in All-Division, both underclassmen. The two All-Division players in softball were Gabby Toral and Sina Capperdale. We also have one All-Division player in baseball, but the other thing, I think, thanks largely to Mr. Harper's class, who did a very good job of clicking on one of the awards, and this young man was not only an All-Division player in baseball, he was also named the State Player of the Year, and that goes to Diego Salazar. Next up is the tennis team. The tennis team has just had a tremendous and fantastic run over the past few years. We have won now the state sectional title seven out of the last eight years, including this year. Just a tremendous group of guys that work really, really hard, and are fantastic tennis players, and also, a lot of them are excellent students, so obviously, that's something we cherish here at Highland Park. So I wanted to call up all of these guys. I think most of them are here, even though some of them said they had a lot of work to do, they showed up anyway, so they are here, a lot of them. First up, this guy was All-Division, All-Conference, he won the GMC, the County Singles Title, and advanced to the second round of the state tournament, in addition to the team award of the Central Jersey Group One Champion in All-White Division, that's Patrick Lynn. Next up, also a county, Middlesex County GMC Champion, this time it's second singles, All-Conference, All-White Division, and again, a contributing member to that state sectional championship team, that's James Oh Yang. Also earning All-Division, Central Jersey Group One Champion and White Division Champion, our third singles player, Justin Ching. Also earning All-Division and All-Central Jersey Group One Champion, White Division Champion, Kevin Lynn. Another All-Division player and Central Jersey Group One Champion, White Division Champion, Josh Chen. We have four other guys, Central Jersey Group One Champion, White Division Champion, Chen Li Hang. Another Central Jersey Champ Team Member, White Division Champion, Andrew Sheed. Another Central Jersey Champ and White Division Champ, Jonathan Tates. And last but not least, soccer extraordinaire, tennis champion, White Division Champion, Felix Rojas Martinez. Last but certainly not least, I'd like to recognize a number of girls on our winter track team and our spring track team. This has been an unbelievable run for this group of girls. Last year, we won the state championships in spring track, this winter, we won the state championship in winter track, and this spring, we fell three points short of winning the state championship again. But it was an excellent runner-up finish. We had some injuries and some illnesses that really set us back, but I was really proud of the girls in the way they ran and persevered through those difficult situations. So, it's been a great run for these girls, and we'd like to recognize all of them. First up, a state champion and two-time state place winner in winter track, and also a two-time state place winner in spring track, that's Bella Godish. Next up is a state champion in winter track, also an individual state place winner in winter track, and a multiple-place winner in spring track, mainly in the 800, but also running the four-by-one, four-by-eight, who's been, just had a fantastic career, that's Yasmin LaCalle. Next up, another state champion on the relay team in the winter, state place winner in winter track, a county champion in the hurdles, a state runner-up in the hurdles, and again, just a fantastic member of the track team, that's Julia Marks. Next up, somebody I know pretty well, a state champion in the winter track, she runs in all of the relays, they were state champions in the four-by-four over the winter, state runner-up in the four-by-four in the spring, placed in the four-by-one, and also placed in third in the four-by-eight, and that's Elizabeth Gervin. I was told I'm allowed to hug her this year, not just to handshakes. Next up is a young woman who is just an incredible jumper, and she won the state championships this year in spring track, and was just a great leap, and then this past weekend at the Meet of Champions, she was down to her last jump, and she wasn't in that top six or that top eight to receive an award, and she pulled out on her last jump, a tremendous jump of eighteen feet nine inches. It was just a great day for her, and it was a great day. The week before, we were state runner-up, and she ran in all the relay, she placed in the 100 meters, she has been just a tremendous champion in track over the years, and it's my pleasure to call up and honor Gabriela Sanchez. Yeah, I would also like to recognize the two of the coaches, I think, were instrumental in really leading the revival here of the program. One is actually not here tonight, he is the PE teacher at the Bartle School. He's actually at a conference Coaches Awards Dinner, receiving the award for Coach of the Year in soccer, which he received. He won the track award last year, so he couldn't make it tonight, but he has done such a tremendous job with our distance guys, and the amount of time that these guys and women have taken off of their times is absolutely incredible. He was instrumental in training Bella Godish to a second place in the mile and a second place in the two-mile in the state championships. And all of our guys, Ethan Gildenberg and Peter Tilton, and all the distance team, I think, just did a tremendous job through the hard work that Keith Roy put into, to really working with these kids, and we'd like to recognize Keith for another tremendous And last, but certainly not least, a couple of years ago, when I really started paying attention to track, when my daughter got involved, I would always see this guy out in the track running around and training the club, and I had a number of conversations with him about, you know, our program, and I asked maybe if one of his guys could help out, and it didn't work out, and then he came to me and said, "Well, maybe I could do it." And I said, "Really? That would be awesome." So, he came on board, and what really, I think, was fantastic about him, he came on in the beginning, and he really sat down with the coaching staff, he has a tremendous knowledge and expertise about track, and really talked to us about training more effectively and doing the right things to get our sprinters in a place where they needed to be. And that expertise that he brought to the program, I think, has obviously really paid off. Two state championships and a state runner-up, due primarily to the expertise and the coaching and also the intensity that this guy brings, and all of those things that you need to really run at the highest level. And I know, I am very grateful, and I think the girls would share that feeling too, for all the effort and the hard work and the determination that this guy puts into track, and what he meant to really putting our program at the highest level. So I want to say thank you and recognize our track coach, Chuck Sneakloth.
I know it's been a long evening, because we have so many awards to give out to these wonderful students, but I just want to say a few words, and the first thing I need to do is we need to clap it up for Mr. Gervin, the Athletic Coordinator, we couldn't do it without him. His knowledge of all the sports, his organization behind his organization behind the scenes, everything he does to get our students to and from the different events, including coaching, wrestling, and being involved with every single sport and every single athlete. I really, really appreciate what Craig does for our program. So again, thank you. And we have lots more to come, because our students who are recognized in baseball and in softball are freshmen. So Diego was a freshman Baseball Player of the Year. We have so much growth. Our track team, we did what we did with one of the students running with mono. And so imagine if we were at top health. We've got a lot of history here in Highland Park that was set this year, but many, many years to come. I didn't say who. Anyway, thank you. And I know that Dr. Taylor has a last word before we have our cookies and water.
I just want to give special thanks not only to the parents and the guardians, grandparents and friends who came out, but the leadership team and the teachers and the Athletic Coordinator and some coaches in the back there who hung in there for the last hour and a half. Thank you for being here. I know you're putting in extra time. Parents, please stick around five minutes or so, have some cookies, water, and then you're welcome to leave when we can pick up business in about five. Thank you. Have a good night.
We are going to get started. So if all of the board members could take their seats. And anyone who doesn't want to stay with us can... Please stay. Whenever she wants to stay, tell them.
I just have one more quick item on my agenda, and that is to introduce formally the two new board representatives, one of whom is with us. Avery Haley Locke, who's a junior currently, will be a senior next year. Julia speaks very highly of you, so... And so does your mother, by the way. And Zai Yu is not with us currently. But is our second representative. And so they'll be formally inducted in September. I asked Avery to stay for another 15 minutes just to get a sense of how we operate. That's my...
It's not usually all awards and clapping and pictures.
Yeah. Yes, you can always leave. Whenever you have to leave, you just... We usually don't take pictures past nine. This was quite unusual this evening. All right, so we will get going with our Board Committee reports. Michelle, Cricklin.
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to try and be brief, but I wasn't here last week, and we had a lot to talk about. So, okay, here we go. I wrote up our committee report, and it's just like a bulleted thing, so I'm just going to go through it really quickly. But we had some major stuff to talk about. And the first was our proposed Gifted and Talented Enrichment Program. That was a presentation given to us by Jennifer Knapp. And like I said, we had a whole lot to talk about, but I'm going to try and boil it down. The new plan is going to be called an Advanced Learning Program. And it's going to be a whole-school initiative for grades pre-K, I guess, the beginning... I'm sorry, kindergarten through fifth. And I think the proposal is that the whole-school enrichment will phase out by fifth, because in the middle school, you know, things are separated out a little bit differently. So all the students in Irving and Bartle will receive whole-class enrichment. And there are criteria that they will meet, the goals and objectives, I guess. So part of what this is is just a philosophical change in terms of what giftedness is. And I sent you all a video that I came across that kind of explains more about that philosophy, what is giftedness and what are the needs of gifted students, how to identify giftedness, and how our society thinks of giftedness and how it actually really is. So it's a lot to digest. But this was some important information for us to know that there would be three types of enrichment that are given. So the first is general exploring experiences to get students interested in particular topics. And then the type two would be activities that provide group training. They let students practice skills and acquire knowledge that they will need to successfully conduct their own activities. And then type three enrichment would be activities for individual or small-group investigations of real problems, like real problem-based learning based on student interests, most importantly, student interests, and skills with the aim to produce a product for real audiences. And so the ways that these types of enrichment will be delivered is through an Advanced Learning Plan Specialist, who we're seeking. We have not hired anyone, but we are seeking. And we already had one round, I guess, of interviews, and two candidates were brought in for sample lessons. Apparently, they did not go well or did not meet the standard that we were looking for. So we are seeking this person still. And this has to be a very special person. You know, this is going to be someone who understands what giftedness is, and not test score achievement. This is not about academics. This is about giftedness.
And the program was, if I think I'm correct, that was put together over the last year or so by Teresa Schaefer-Dolan, who was in the position of being the G and T enrichment person.
Correct. So, yeah, she came... I guess she came in first, you know, on the planning stage, and then this was another iteration of her plan. So it's not exactly what we were presented with before. It's changed, not significantly, but somewhat. But the core of the plan is the same, and that's identifying areas of giftedness that are not necessarily tied to test scores, academics, or other types of IQ or standardized-based assessments.
So in the spring, or in the fall, rather... Hi, I know my seasons. It'll probably be really important for us to have a presentation at the board's...
It's actually planned for August. This nap is going to be a period at the August Board Meeting.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, there's a lot here to discuss, but the specialist responsibilities are something that I wanted to discuss, because I did also attend the HP Posack meeting, where we discussed enrichment and, you know, pull-out-of-classroom enrichment for small groups and push-in enrichment and the ways in which those students might not be pulled out. So we discussed that, and I think that there was a lot of concern around what the responsibilities of this new hire would be. So I just want to run through those really quickly. So Phase One of the specialist responsibilities would be to visit students and complete student surveys. So the second visit would then deliver lessons to second and fifth grade explicitly. 21st-century skills would be noticed, things like collaboration, communication, creative thinking, and critical thinking. And would also, this person would provide classroom teachers with different kinds of information to display in the room. So Phase One would be to get the students and the classroom teachers to think about ways in which giftedness appears. So, you know, getting to know yourself, getting to know your students. That's the general idea. And then Phase Two would be to organize, plan, and administer testing around those things, materials for the class lessons and notifications for everyone involved. Phase Three would be to plan and conduct all high-end learning, push-in and pull-out activities and projects. So there's so much here. It's late. I feel like, you know, there's a lot for us to discuss. But we do want to try to, you know, put this plan in place for 2018. I think that... 2018-19. So that's the idea. So this is just introduction to that. And if you want to read more about giftedness, there's a very famous researcher that this plan was modeled after his research, and his last name is Rinzouli. And he's at the University of Connecticut. So then we also discussed the grades 9 through 12 health curriculum. And I didn't realize that we were going to be meeting our new high school vice principal tonight, and she has a background in health and sex ed. So I just nearly jumped out of my chair. I think I scared her, because I was so excited that this is obviously an area of weakness that we've had, and we've tried to address, and we're going to get help in that area. So on top of the new curriculum that we have, we now have, you know, more leadership in the building on this issue. But some of the things that we discussed that were not really being covered in the way that we would like were all kinds of things related to our health curriculum for 9th and 12th graders. So it's on the radar. Again, that's another big topic for us to discuss, but we did get to talk about some of the weaknesses that we still have. The fourth item that we discussed was with Rebecca Fittipaldi. So we had two special visitors giving presentations at the committee meeting. And she talked to us about the K-12 Amistad Curriculum update. So I know everyone's aware of what we're doing here. We're compliant with the Amistad Act of New Jersey. And to that end, we have added some curriculum writing planned for this summer, trying to implement everything that we can to be compliant on the Amistad Act. So the middle school in particular is going to be working on creating, I guess, taking on the mantle of being a human rights-friendly school. So this is a project that Ms. Osamia... I'm so sorry. Osamia is going to be heading up and starting in the summer. She's going to be creating a timeline for us to be starting the process through Amnesty International to meet the criteria of human rights-friendly school. And there's a great deal of information there. I could send you a link if you haven't... I think, actually, Dr. Taylor already sent us the link. We also talked about sheltered instruction training for grades 2 through... it's 2 and 3. And they will have a really... A highlight will be put on culturally-responsive texts in that particular program. So that's in Bartle. And also in September, what's on the agenda is a partnership with King University, where there's going to be two graduate courses provided to help us to teach our educators about how to teach these two topics, the Holocaust and prejudice. And prejudice reduction is the title of the course. So those two courses are going to be, I think it was eight weeks? I'm sorry.
Fifteen weeks.
Fifteen weeks, two 15-week courses. And those are graduate-level courses. And as of our meeting, 10 teachers have signed up to take those. Yeah, so that's on the agenda for tonight. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that we have some new courses, and these are all high-school-level courses that are added to our course guide for the GLOW program students. And the titles of those appear in the agenda. But they're all focused on the idea of 21st-century careers. So there's various titles, various grade levels, but those are all high-school programs... Sorry, courses. And that is it, I believe. Looking... Oh, and we did have a little bit of a discussion on the importance of keyboarding as an aspect of our curriculum. I know, you know, I'm passionate about handwriting, being 12-year survivor of Catholic school. I have really wonderful handwriting, but sometimes I have nothing much in content to say, but damn, can I write. So, you know, keyboarding is a skill that is pretty important these days. And I know that a lot of students get keyboarding around the fifth grade in our middle...
Oh, I think they get a lot younger now.
Well, they're doing it, but they're not... I don't know that they're having any kind of proper keyboarding instruction. There's a program that they still use, that I think I used when I was in high school, Mavis Beacon. Everyone's laughing, like, Jesus. Really. It's like the Flintstones car, you know, how the feet stick out the butt. That's what it feels like. Okay, there's other things. So we did discuss some other types of programs that I came across, actually, as a homeschooler. And so, you know, I think keyboarding is something that we just wanted to put on the map as something that we wanted to, I guess, memorialize or make a little bit more organized an effort in teaching keyboarding, because you can get the job done with two index fingers, but we can do better. So that concludes my curriculum committee report.
Cool. And I just want to clarify, particularly for Avery. So we have two kinds of meetings typically during each month. Now, we don't do that over the summer. We only meet once over the summer, because there's not as much going on. But typically, we have a workshop meeting first, which was our meeting last week, and then we have our voting meeting the second time. Michelle wasn't here last week for the workshop meeting. Normally, on the workshop agenda, number one would be committee report. So that's kind of what Michelle just did, even though it's not on the agenda. So in case you're, like, looking at the agenda, like, what is she talking about? That's why nothing that she was talking about was on the agenda, because we talk about the stuff that we're doing in meetings, and then the idea is, like, maybe in a month or two or three, you'll see those things show up on an agenda. But we're kind of like talking about them first at the committee level, then in a workshop, and then we'll vote on it. So we're not just like, hi, we're talking about this now, now we're going to vote on it, and it's done. Okay, good night. You know, like, there's a process that goes on behind the things that we do. So everything on the agenda that isn't in bold, we've already talked about. Dr. Taylor's getting sick over here. I think I'm going to move over here closer to Aunt.
Allergies.
So typically, on our workshop agendas, anything that isn't in... Or on our voting session agendas, rather, anything that isn't in bold, we already talked about last week. So we're not really going to go over again, so...
And I am long-winded, so get used to it.
Could I ask a curriculum question?
Of course.
So, Dr. Taylor, you've had the committee talking about the play-based learning at the Irving School. And I, you know, that's not... I don't think the curriculum committee has reviewed that yet with you. Will you be giving us a report on that before September as the committee meets and as the committee...
That's a great time to do it, absolutely.
So you will?
Yeah.
Great.
I'll be sure to do that. September.
No, before...
Before September.
Before September, so we have...
I can make... We can do it over the summer.
Yeah, that's what I meant, over the summer. It doesn't have to be like a long-winded report of, seriously, a few paragraphs to just our five-minute discussion to see, you know, have we found the blocks that were thrown away? And so on, so that we can change some of the teaching there.
I'll schedule it for July.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I tend to do... Whoever shares these with me, thank you. Rickola?
Oh, you're welcome.
But thank you for these.
Sure.
Two meetings, one per month.
July and August.
One per month.
I don't have the dates in front of it, but they're on the website. And you don't have to come. You can, but you are not obligated to come until... She's like, meetings over the summer. So, yeah, until September, you're off the hook.
Unless you want to, right?
Yeah, absolutely. If you want to come, you are more than welcome to come. We will welcome you anytime, Avery.
Yeah.
Okay, so if nobody has any other questions for Michelle, we'll move on to finance facilities?
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to go over the items that were not on the workshop meeting, and they're the items in bold. So Item 4 is an additional cafeteria bill list for May 26 through June 1. The next item is Item 12. There's one more contractor, and that's tutoring in a non-public school, and that's covered by the ESA Title I funding. Item 15 is the contract amounts for our next five years of our custodial management program. And there's going to be an addendum to that coming up in a moment. Another item further on. But that's our contract with what used to be Temco and is now called Italian Global Services. Item 18 and 19 are quotes for wood gym and stage-floor ref... Item 18 and 19 are quotes for wood gym and stage floor refinishing. And the winning bid was from Metusek Sports Flooring. And that's an annual kind of funding. The items 20 and 21 are concrete sidewalk and apron removal and installation. And that's, that's, was all, we'll be, we'll be voting on that for the amount of $8,770. Item 22 are kitchen equipment totaling the winning bid of $12,919.29. This is pertinent to the, I believe, to the Board of Health meetings I go to, because there's been some comments about equipment that's from the health inspector that's needed repair or replacement. So this is good to have because I have that meeting on Thursday. I'm sure they're going to ask me. Items 24, 25, 26, and 27 are renewals to our law firm, Bush Law Group, to our bond issue advisors, Phoenix Advisors, to our accident insurance volunteer specialty, and to our CPAs, Better Kerwick and Company. So that's 24 through 27. The 28 is the amended contract for our, for our maintenance services. That takes the amount out of the budget for the cost of the person that's joined the district from outside of the maintenance services. Item 29 is the, our submission for our No Child Left Behind ESA grant application for Items 30 and two through 32 are transfers to respectively the emergency reserves of $100,000, to our maintenance reserve to the amount of $100,000, and capital reserve also to the amount of $100,000.
But not to exceed, right? Not necessarily $100,000?
Uh, not to exceed $100,000. That's correct. Oh, and, and in fact, depends exactly how the year ends.
Right.
But hopefully, we'll be able to put those, those monies in, all three of those. Item 33 and 34 give Linda, our business administrator, the ability to finish this year and pay money out over the summer. Item 35 is new bedside instruction. And item 36 is handicap transportation, as is item 37. And item 38 is our awarding of the contract for Source for Teachers to provide substitute teachers for the 2018-2019 school year. On this, quite a number of new motions that we'll be doing. And thank you, Linda, for your help in going over this with us.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mark?
Just are we voting on all of these? Because there's so many new ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
We don't really have a chance to look at it.
Do we know, item 22, were energy efficient equipment considered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they were given the directive to use Energy Star whenever available.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just quickly explain to me the, the approval of the contract and then the amendment to the contract?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. And, you know, the, so many of these came up, and Linda unfortunately had to be away, so that, that's why they just, this is really a, I feel like a one-time only thing that so many new ones were, were on this agenda. So we, we went over last time the approval of the contract for the full amount as bid, but then we had to amend that amount because we, we took the, I think the title is Supervisor, Linda? The supervisor that's being employed by the district now is going out of the contract. And he's been approved and he'll be employed by us in the fall, but we, we are taking that money out of the contract with them. So you'll see that the amount of the contract has been reduced by $86,795. If you look at the bottom line totals between the items 28 and I think it's item 13, I'm trying to do that from memory. Item, pardon me. Oh, give me a moment. I'm looking at, let's see, here it is. 15, is it?
15.
15, thank you. So item 15 to item 28, the difference, if you look at the totals, is the 86,795. And that's the cost to us of the employee we've hired who's no longer going to be implied, employed by TEMCO, by Italian.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about anything else on the finance agenda?
Not on the finance, but I think we, we missed something on curriculum.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Let's, let's finish up finance and then if we have to, we can go back.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? No? Okay. So what is the thing on curriculum, Michelle?
On number?
Number five, on the curriculum agenda. It's a volunteer event for June 15th at the middle school. I just wanted some basic information about what that was. Number five on the curriculum. I wasn't here last week. Was that, was that new? Or, I know I wasn't here last week, so I apologize if I don't have any information on that.
I didn't know I got it either.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Do, Michelle was just wondering if you could give her a little bit of information about what that is.
We didn't get to discuss it at our meeting and I wasn't.
I did provide information in the board folder. You can read more details. Essentially, this is a nonprofit organization funded by private companies, provide grants, in this case, L'Oreal is funding this project. These are the volunteers Mrs. Osamia referred to.
Okay.
Will be coming next week to, actually, the 15th.
Right.
Right? I believe it's the 15th to work with our students.
Okay, thank you.
And various projects around the school.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll move on to personnel. Judy?
Okay. So I will also just go over the new items. So first, number 14, it's a request for payment of additional sick leave. Employee that ran out of sick time and we are giving a continuation of salary beyond the contractual sick leave allotment. So that's period of June 11th to 15th and the 18th to the 21st, nine days in total. Okay? Number 18 is basically a listing of all the Schedule P positions, appointments, along with their stipend. So that goes on for quite a few pages, okay? That goes all the way through page 23. Number 20 gives the hourly rate for the summer secretary substitutes. Make sure I don't miss anything. Okay, under 27, appointment of Title III Summer ESL Program staff. The last one, Brian Safera, teacher at the middle school and the high school are both added in there. Under 29, approval of the summer hours for the guidance counselor at the high school. The hourly rate is included in this agenda. Number 30 is the approval of summer employment for the clinical psychologist at the teen center, Dr. Roth, July 1st through August 31st. And then, under the extended school year, item 33 is the approval of the following staff members to be funded. And you'll see there are some additional paras. There's some paras. There is a speech therapist, behaviorist, some substitute teachers. 34 is approval of staff for summer 2008 child study team meetings, IEP meetings. So the speech therapist is added, two speech therapists are added, Frady Silverberg, Esther Twersky. Okay, we're getting towards the end here. 39, approval of professional development. That is Leanne Matthews to present sheltered instruction training to second and third graders on June 12th, 13th, and 15th. So she'll be paid for 15 hours of prep. 40 is the approval of summer technology work. John Garten will perform summer technology work, not exceed 25 hours. We have an appointment of para on 41, another para 42, maternity leave replacement, number 43. Yes, so as you know, we were looking for a maternity leave replacement for the assistant principal. And so we're recommending tonight for that person to be Megan McNally, who has been the interim principal over at Irving. So she will start if we approve effective October 1st. Number 44 is the appointment of a para at the middle school. Okay, 45, we spoke about last week. This is the appointment of the facilities manager, Michael O'Donnell. And he used to be an employee of TEMCO, and now he's our employee. And that, let's see. And then 46 is the approval of extension of medical leave. We have a resignation of a part-time secretary with the Educational Services Department. That's 47. We regret that Caitlin Kowalczek is resigning effective June 6th, making her last day with the district June 11th. And then finally, we have a request for maternity, disability, childcare, leave of absence as well. Employee 0060.
I have a question about what is sheltered instruction training in item number 39? For the second and third graders?
Can you say that again, Joa?
What is sheltered instruction training for the second and third graders in item 39?
What is it?
Yeah.
Sheltered instruction is a means of providing in-class support for ESL students. So the idea is to, instead of pulling them out and removing them from the class, actually provide, it's almost like providing a bilingual education for the entire class.
Thank you.
Could I, could I make a suggestion that modify item on page 19? Item number, I have it here somewhere, item 18, on page 19, the sixth line down has a missing period, so it looks like the amount that we're budgeting is way high.
Uh-huh. Thanks for clarifying that.
It's 17, yes, it shows 1776, 00, no doubt.
I would do that job.
Yes, it's a very good pay scale. So could we, could we move to amend that to, say, $1,776?
Yeah. That's fine. Do we have to do anything formally to do that, Linda, or can we just?
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I had a personnel question. Number 47, it says that her last day is going to be July 11th. Is that a misprint or is that June, is that June 11th or is that right, July 11th? Number 47.
I'm sorry, Michelle, which number?
47 in personnel.
Page 38.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Is leaving because she is?
No, she's just asking if the date is correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of her last day.
Last date, July 11th.
I just didn't know if that was.
Thanks for clarifying that.
So before we.
It's June 11th.
Before we vote on that, I guess we need to change it.
So it appears it should be effective, it should be effective July 11th, not June 6th.
Correct.
Ah, okay. So do we have to?
Right, 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 right. So she's announcing it, June 6th.
Make that change, yeah.
Last day is June 11th.
Okay.
Okay.
Period. Thank you, Michelle.
So the July 11th is correct?
Correct. Not June 6th.
Okay.
Yeah, she is a 12-month employee, so that makes sense.
Thank you.
It looks like there's a couple from last week that are missing on the, oh, no, there it is, the LBTC.
If we covered it last week, I didn't.
Yep.
Talk about it.
Yeah, they're still there.
It's hard to find everything because it's all.
So large.
Different. There's a lot.
The job coach at the high school, that's not on here anymore. Or is it somewhere else?
Are you looking for something that's not there?
Yeah, that last week we were approving a job coach, higher professional at the high school.
We inadvertently left that person off the agenda, but we put her on for July.
Got it.
We do have somebody in mind. I'm, I've emailed her to apologize for the mistake.
Okay. And that, that was the only one left off? I found the LBTC. Is that it? I hope so. Yeah, it looks like it.
So we currently have one more paraprofessional position to fill so far at the middle school.
Okay. Anything else for Jenny?
I had a brief question for Scott, just to say it in public. We are hoping to get the, is a question, we are hoping to get the professional development for the honors option on the agenda for July?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Actually, it'll be curriculum writing.
Oh, curriculum writing, pardon me, yeah.
A committee of teachers met today.
Oh, great.
The second of two meetings.
Excellent.
Propose the classes that we're going to introduce next year.
Thank you.
Okay. If that's everything, all right. I just want to reiterate how incredibly I, excited I am that Keisha Golden Cooper is going to be joining us next year and that the timing of this worked out so well that she got to introduce herself with so many high school students and staff and parents here. I'm just, couldn't be more excited to have her join us at the high school. And also that we're approving the youth safety specialist job description. I hope everybody gets a chance to read through that and see how carefully constructed that is to really have that position be something that fits with the culture that we're trying to, we're trying to establish in the high school. So I just wanted to highlight those one last time. Okay, so policy, Ann, you want to run us through what's on the agenda?
Sure. First, thanks so much to Mark for reading the policy in and explaining it last week. It looked, there are no new policies since last week, and I quickly skimmed the versions on the drive. It looks like you guys made no changes.
No.
I made the change to the LICE policy, but what we.
We were going to put it off until.
Well, is it on the, is it on the, we didn't get the, what was on the drive was not the correct version.
You know.
So I emailed it, I emailed that, the correct version to Scott.
And we placed it in the drive.
It is on the drive.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, I see it now. Okay, so.
I didn't have a chance to check.
And right, the change that we made was changing superintendent to principal.
Principal, yes.
I'm sorry. So there's a, is a question with a family that is, for some reason, refusing to treat LICE on their child repeatedly. The nurse or the social worker will refer the matter to the principal rather than the superintendent. And then if that can't be resolved at that level, then it will be referred to the superintendent. So we just put in the extra step of the chain of command that we left out before. And that is the only change from last week, I believe.
Right, thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Okay. For that one, I did ask for teacher input. I don't know if.
For LICE?
Yeah. For the policy.
We had nurse input. I believe all the, were all the nurses consulted, Scott? I don't actually remember if they all looked at it.
I brought it to the Professional Relations Committee's attention, which is made up of a representative group of teachers.
And we had.
I didn't mass, I don't mass send them out to the teachers.
We had a Google Doc that at least, I think, two school nurses contributed to, you know, with some of their concerns. And we took those into account.
Okay, because they, they have this policy in Edison, but it's an issue right now.
How is it an issue?
I kind of want to backtrack now.
How so?
There have been a lot of complaints from the union of the teachers.
About what?
About the policy.
What about the policy, though? What's?
That students can remain in the classroom.
Oh.
No matter what.
I see. Well, they are, I mean, you are required to treat the lice. I mean, they don't like it that the student can stay for the whole day?
That the student can just be there regardless. They're not requi, I mean, we're asking them to treat, but there's no requirement to make sure that they're treated or that they continue to treat. There's nothing we can really do. So regardless of anything we're doing, the student is still in the classroom. So there are, you know, there can be active bugs on the head all over the place so that you can see them.
They're there anyway.
Yeah, but I mean, to the point where you can see them and they're still there.
So at that point, I mean, wouldn't the teacher then refer that to the nurse? And the nurse would call the parents again and say, "We have a case of active head lice", yada, yada, yada. I mean, at some point, that child should stop.
You would hope.
Right, I mean, I think that, is it happening that, like, tons of kids are just coming back and refusing to treat the problem? Maybe?
Can't we be, isn't, I don't recall exactly, but don't we have the right then to refer this to the appropriate state agency? And isn't that in the policy?
Oh, boy, I didn't think that was in the policy, but I could be wrong.
Refer to the social worker.
The social worker.
And then to the principal.
Right, in the school.
And then to the superintendent necessary.
Right. So, I mean, it's true, we don't at any point say, like, "You're definitely kicked out of school." But, you know, you get a message from the nurse, then you're contacted the next day, you, the parent. Then if you're not doing it, it's referred to the nurse or the social worker, then that's referred to the principal, that's referred to the superintendent.
Right, like, most of them are there, I see that, but the child is never, ever, you know, asked to not be in the classroom.
Right.
And that?
And that's been frustrating in Edison for some of the teachers? Yeah. Did you get any pushback that you care to share from nurses about that?
Or teachers.
Or teachers here in Highland Park?
I, no, I mean, we have not gotten any input. I'll be frank with you, there has not been a lot of passion around this policy among the staff.
Really?
The nurses conformed with the CDC regs, which essentially do whatever we, it essentially called for us to do whatever we can to keep the child in the classroom.
Right, I mean, there are no associations that call for children to be removed from a classroom because of lice. Yes, it freaks people out. The idea behind the policy is that we're going to start to educate people about what lice are and what they aren't, and what the hazards are and what the hazards aren't. And it's, it is absolutely an inconvenience, but it is not a health hazard, and students are in our classrooms.
But I think they understand that it's not a health hazard, like, they're the teachers. They, they have the education. They're just finding it difficult when there are certain students who are not being treated and are there day in and day out. And at the point where it's obvious, you know, you cannot?
But kicking kids out of class doesn't, doesn't make a parent treat them either. You know, I mean, if a meeting with the principal and a meeting with the superintendent isn't going to make a parent treat a child, we can't expel them.
No, I'm not saying that.
No, I'm just saying there isn't, you know, there aren't great solutions there at that point. And it's our job to educate kids, you know? So. What, huh, yeah, I don't know what we can really?
We've had brief conversations, I can't bring you any, you know?
No, no, right, right, sure. I'm just wondering, like, do they, do they want, like, someone to inspect the kid and then say the child has to be inspected before coming back in?
I think probably.
I see, I see, okay.
And why wouldn't something like that be a problem? Like, I've, I know that there are instances where kids may come up with, I don't know, some sort of a rash or something that could be contagious or could lead to questions about whether you need to be in class, and then they have to get cleared, some sort of clearance, right, before re-entering? So?
Because, I mean?
I don't know if that's possible in this case.
What we're asking is that the parents, that the parents guarantee that they have been, that some treatment has been done, whether they've seen the doctor and the doctor has prescribed medication, or whether they're combing the child's hair out. But a nurse can't do a check to ensure that a child doesn't have any live lice. It might not be to the point where you can see them crawling over a kid's head, but they could still have two that the nurse doesn't see, and then those two turn into 12, the 12 turn into 24, the 24. So that check is just, it's busy work for the nurse, it's possibly violating the kid's HIPAA rights, but it's not solving the problem. The only thing that's going to solve the problem is educating our staff, educating the parents, even educating the kids, and de-stigmatizing it. So people aren't hiding it and people aren't feeling ashamed about it. And we all just know that this is what happens when you put a bunch of kids together, and we all work together to, you know, minimize this as much as possible.
But I guess I don't understand why if, sorry, if, like, a parent has, hasn't treated their child for whatever reason, and it's been many, many days, why, without, obviously, without, like, parental consent, the school nurse couldn't initiate treatment?
Because we can't. I mean, we can't treat, treatments are either medicinal or it's sitting there for an hour and a half and combing your kid's hair out. I mean, it's just not a role that the, I mean, we can provide the tools, we can, you know? We talked about a kit, right? A comb-out kit and instructions? Yeah, and they have them, apparently.
We do, we have kits that we can also provide to the pairs.
But we can't, I mean, even our nurses can't, they can't prescribe medication, they can't, they can't even say that a parent should use a particular medication or should, I mean, they could say, "You need to see your pediatric, or you should see your pediatrician", but?
But are the kids being used? Like, I mean, I guess the question is if we have them, are they being used or are they effective in any way? And if not, then?
Well, the kid just means, like, a lice comb.
No, I mean, I understand, I just don't?
Someone can't afford it or doesn't know where to get it.
Right, I guess, I don't know, I guess I'm curious whether that solution that's in place is actually doing much, you know, for the problem.
Like, there's no guarantee with lice. There's just no guarantee. We are never going to be able to say, "We are a lice-free community." Like, it's, I mean, this is, the best we can do is as many preventative measures as we possibly can. But we're never going to rid any elementary school where kids are constantly rubbing up against each other. You know, even still at the middle school level, I'm like, you know, my girls will hug their friends, and I'm like, "Right there, did you see it? That's where, that's where one just jumped from their, your head to the other," I mean, just jokingly, but, I mean, they're constantly on top of each other. And, I mean, the, the fact of it is, kids are more likely to spread it outside of school than they are inside of school. And they're more likely to share it with their close friends than they are with the kids sitting next to them in, in class. So? I would think it would be, I mean, I think it's a great question. I would think it'd be very difficult to treat in school, even if there was no sort of, like, civil rights or whatever, or, you know, or HIPAA. I mean, even, just because, you know, it either usually involves putting, like, a wet substance on your hair and they're washing it out, or sitting for hours and hours.
Yeah, I understand, I've done it, like, 10 times.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't mean to tell you something you didn't know.
No, 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 it's just, I guess the question is, like, for, for me, is that they, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I just don't, like, I don't see the follow-through, like, you know, follow-up with this, and I don't see that this, like, stuff that we have in place is do, I don't see that that's doing anything necessarily.
Because, like, with just about anything, most of this is on the parents. And the most we can do is educate parents. We used to have policies in place where kids got kicked out of classes and a nurse would inspect kids. I mean, in my own experience, that didn't work. And what, what it did was it encouraged families not to come forward and tell people that they had lice, because they didn't want their kids to miss school. So what you're doing is you're encouraging people to hide it instead of, instead of, yeah, instead of treating it. I mean, because the nurse, you know, we were treating our child and the nurse found a nit and sent the kid home again, and then you're like, "Well, I mean, if they're going to be sent home for anything that's in their hair, then, you know, I'm just not going to say anything."
So what's the, what's the, so the education part is the fact that if, like, lice are found, then parents are informed about it? Like, what's the, or how does it extend beyond, does it extend beyond that? Or is that the idea that if people know, then they now have the information once they've, like, found it?
And that the information goes home at the beginning of every school year?
Okay.
Yeah, which is relatively near. We're also trying to be near the September. We carved out time to train the teachers on what to look for, how to approach a child, if, when to refer a child to the nurse. In my three years, we have not had, since I've been here, a crisis around lice. I think this policy reflects the change. I think it reflects the reality on the ground.
It's a really difficult issue. People freak out. This issue makes people freak out, and it's massive inconvenience. It's a massive inconvenience to parents and to kids. It's a pain. It's an absolute pain. There's no doubt about it. And if there was some way to miraculously stop it from happening, we would all write that policy tomorrow. But there just isn't. I mean, short of education and de-stigmatization, I don't, I don't know how else you deal with it. And none of the associations, the nursing associations, the pediatric associations, nobody says kids should be missing school from this, or parents should be missing work or, or anything to that, to that effect. You can get up to the podium. Otherwise, it gets weird if we keep. I know, soon you'll have a microphone. So soon you're going to have a microphone. Yeah, that's, but, but? We have public comment in a minute, and that's the time to go. I know, until you have a microphone, it gets, we don't usually do dialogue with the audience. Right now, you're still audience. Soon, soon you're going to have a microphone. So did anybody else have anything else about the?
On 4283, I owe Ann some markups of the current policy. I think, I would recommend that we go through first reading because it's, it's more a punctuation and how things line up change rather than anything pertaining to how it reads.
Yeah, sure, just get it to us and we can circulate it to the committee and all that stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's really just, you know, where the periods line up and where certain things line up. And like, one sentence that was struck that would remain and, you know, a few small things like that. But essentially, it would more closely mirror the policy for the teaching staff, rather, because this is for support staff.
I'm sorry, remind me which, which, this is 42?
4283.
4283. I mean, the goal here was to make it almost exactly mirror?
And it's really close, there's just like one or two small things.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure, yeah, let me know what they are.
I'll send to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
But I would recommend going through first reading for it.
Okay.
And approving it as it is.
We can change it.
Yeah, because there's, they're, they're of minor consequence.
Thank you. Okay, so if there isn't anything else on policy, Monique, you want to give us the Equity and Excellence report that we missed last week?
Yes, I will. We met May 30th, and I'll try to just get through the bullet point list. We continue discussing and working on our new cultural competency policy in preparation for presentation to policy committee. Again, we're referencing South Orange and Maplewood School District's cultural competency policy as a model. But we did discuss how we can incorporate the core elements of that policy with the goal in mind of really speaking specifically to our district's initiatives around the area of cultural diversity and restorative practice, and of course, equity and excellence. So we really had, I think, very good discussion about what we want our policy to look like and really started tackling it and spent the bulk of our time really on this policy. Scott was able to pull up our existing philosophy of education slash district mission statement policy, which is 2110, which actually includes a reference to cultural competency. So we decided that rather than establishing a new and separate policy, we would add this component of our educational philosophy as an amendment to the language. So we're looking at 2110.1 as our cultural competency policy. And we started drafting language towards that. We will look to finish that up later this month in our next meeting. So we did also begin talking about, or continue, I think this is also a reoccurring sort of theme lately, is the discipline incident reporting. We discussed the need for clarity and better understanding around the process and expectations for reporting discipline incidents to the state in terms of being compliant with their guidelines. As I mentioned in our last meeting during my recap of postdoc or two meetings ago, parents have raised concerns about some of the language that they've, they've experienced being used in incident reportings of their children, and they're concerned about, you know, possible disparate impact on kids of color and kids with special needs who are obviously at risk, greater risk for receiving harsher and more frequent discipline incidents. We talked about that. I know this has come up in some of the community meetings that have been held, and Scott is getting a handle on this, and I think looking at providing leadership to staff on how to ensure that we're being compliant with the state, but then also aligning with our district shift away from kind of the traditional school responses to discipline, and being careful that we're also being culturally sensitive. One, I think one, well, was proposed, but at this point, he, Scott did go ahead and present to the discipline study group the idea of adding an additional column to our discipline code that would provide clear guidance to staff on when a particular violation needs to be reported to the state, so that we're really clear about, you know, when it needs to be reported and when it's just internal. So I think that's already actually done. It was done in our last look at the discipline code, or it's in the works. We also talked about the need to figure out how best to align restorative practices that are occurring at middle and high, the middle and high schools with the responsive classroom at Irving and decision-making lab at Bartle, kind of just making this continuum, right, of social, emotional learning, and how we can somehow get these models to sort of be in more sync and unison and have also the staff to understand how one leads to the other. Scott did share a table that was created for Bartle, I believe, showing the, showing how students progress from the responsive child model to restorative child, which is helpful. I don't know if that's available on the board, but that would be really helpful to make that available, I think, either on the district, on the website, or in some way make that?
Yeah, I could put it on the website. Absolutely.
And I think that's, that does it for that meeting. It really was a good discussion on those two issues, and I know there's going to be ongoing talk about that in our next meeting.
All right, great, thank you. And actually, to tag onto that, the last meeting that Scott and I had with our strategic planning group, we briefly looked at the code of conduct as well, and we talked about adding another column that would specify when the police would be called also.
Oh, yes.
Which would also highlight when they wouldn't be called. So if this is what's happening, then we do call. If this is what's happening, we don't call, so.
And that did come up, that did, we did address that in the discipline meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or input for Monique?
I know, since I wasn't here last week, I'm kind of long-winded. But I just wanted to ask if the, you know, proposed referrals, because I know our, our new vice principal at the high school is going to be in charge of discipline and restorative practice, is that right? So I don't know much about her. I wasn't here last week, and I didn't see, you know, her information, her resume. So I just wanted to know if that was something that was, you know, a part of her hiring process.
Absolutely.
It's kind of a personnel issue, but, yeah, I just wanted to know if, what we had discussed, or what is being discussed here in Equity and Excellence is part of her, you know, understanding of how, of the direction that we're trying to move in with restorative practice and the reporting, and also about, you know, getting law enforcement involved? Because I know that that's been something that's been a tradition, you know, that law enforcement is always called if, you know, if administration thinks there might be an issue, which is troubling.
She, you know, we had discussions with her at length in the, in the interview process, and she's right there.
Wonderful.
She's, she made it very clear how involved she gets with her students, particularly any students who may be at any kind of risk for behaviors that may more typically be any students who may be at any kind of risk for behaviors that may more typically be targeted different ways, and what she, what she does to, to reach those students and work with those students.
I mean, I had assumed so because of her, you know, ethnicity, and also because she'd said that she'd had training as a SAC.
Right, yeah.
So...
Yeah, so all those things were huge.
Like, pinch me, I'm dreaming.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, so she doesn't, she is not specifically trained in restorative practices, but she had done her homework, and she had seen that that was the direction that the district was going, and was excited about that and ready to dive into that, so...
And she's going to get that training over the summer, right? The four days at least?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
She's going to get that training over the summer with IIRP?
Yeah, so she'll, she'll be able to hit the ground running in September.
Yeah, thank you, that's wonderful.
Yep. Okay, so if we don't have anything else for Monique, public comment? Keith, hello, hello, does he have anything for us? No, no. Avery, you want to go?
Oh.
Okay. Okay, so we will go ahead and go on to our board action items. Michelle, would you move the curriculum instruction items for us, please?
I would love to. So I would like to move items number one through, I'm sorry, I'm on page one through six, please.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Marusty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Okay, Mark, could you move the finance items for us?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through 38.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Marusty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
No on 16, and yes on the remainder.
Oh, sorry, you're waiting for me. Personnel, Judy, could you move the personnel items?
Yes, so we're moving items one through 48, reading in the correction of the stipend under anticipated SEALAB coordinator to read $1,776. And also on 47, the correction with the, the last day in district, July 11th, crossing out that other part. So that's items one through 48, eight with the corrections.
Okay, great, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Linda, could we please have a roll call? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Marusty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Abstain on 20, and yes on everything else.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Abstain on nine, and yes on the remainder.
Okay, and Ann, could you move policies, please?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to move policy number, number one, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Marusty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Okay, given the hour, instead of running through all of the board liaison reports, I'm just going to ask if anybody has anything burning, pressing that they need to put forward, and if not, we'll just do it all again in July?
Sounds good.
Sound good?
So this isn't new business, but I did, I...
Oh, wait, wait, hold on, we're not there yet. We're at the liaison reports. We'll get there. Okay, so nobody has anything pressing from any meetings, or anything coming up they want to let us know about?
No, no.
No, okay. All right, I like how we did that expeditiously. I don't have anything under my president's report, I have a letter A, but I don't have anything discussed about that. Tonight's meeting is brought to you by...
I'm going to deliver the books that we're going to read this week, so you'll have them in the envelope with a book in it at your doorstep.
Oh, wow.
Probably the next couple of days.
Things on our doorstep.
I just couldn't schlep all the boxes tonight, I had too much going on.
Okay, great. So new business, do you want to cover a little bit about the survey?
Sure, so Darcy came up with a good idea last week to administer a survey to our community, parents, guardians, and our teachers, to get some feedback about their relationship with assessment data. We're going to use that information to frame our discussion on Wednesday when we meet with the Department of Education. I'll have handouts for participants for, during the afternoon session, that's an invite-only part of the day. The questions asked had to do with what people thought the relevancy of park data is to help the kids. The teachers were asked to think about what they do mostly with assessment data, whether it be to inform instruction, help parents support learning at home. So I'll have all that information. Not shocking results so far, but I'll withhold the information until we all gather on Wednesday.
I have a question about the survey, who was it sent out to? So, like, who did the survey go out to? The entire district?
The survey?
Yeah.
It went to...
Teachers, like, who's it?
All the teachers. Well, actually, all teachers who, no, I'm sorry, it was all K-12 teachers, not just teachers who teach in grades that are tested by park. So all teachers were given the survey. We, we got about, I think it's 37 responses so far, fairly low response, so you're right, tomorrow's the cutoff. And I think we're in the 69 range for parent guardian input, 69 responses.
So there was a survey sent to parents and guardians as well?
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
You can access the survey by going to our Facebook page.
Okay, I don't think I saw it, thank you.
We also sent out an email, but that's the best way, go to the Facebook page.
Okay, thank you.
For those in the audience who might be watching at 10:20, you have till tomorrow.
So maybe we could send out a quick reminder tomorrow morning?
That could, yeah.
Preferably with, like...
Another email blast.
Preferably with, like, a plain text, you know, subject header, important survey, then like one, not a PDF.
We could do that.
All kinds of frou-frou, yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, one other thing I do want to bring up just quickly, as we are here at the end of the year, I'm very happy to say that Ann has agreed to say a few words at the fifth grade moving up ceremony, and Monique has agreed to say a few words at the eighth grade moving up ceremony. Lucky me, I get to do the high school graduation, but I will, I believe Scott gave me all the dates, I'll send out an email to everybody, and just let me know what you can attend, so we can get back to those respective buildings and let them know who will be in attendance so they can plan accordingly for each of the ceremonies. And if, if you're available, please come there, it's always lovely, the Irving one makes me cry every year, even if I don't know any of the Irving kids.
That was actually going to be my question, and I'm wondering, I, I just want to make sure, so graduation, somebody said this evening is on the 25th?
No, 25th.
On the 20th.[1671.26]